Thirty-five A, thirty-six, and thirty-six A. Do we have a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
May I second it? All in favor? It's unanimous? We have no minutes to approve tonight, so we'll move directly to our seven o'clock scheduled agenda item with Jackie Palumbo, production manager, Arinda Productions, and it's regarding a request to film a television program in Wilmington, losing it with Jillian Michaels. Good evening. Invite you to have a seat at the table in the front. You're Ms. Palumbo?
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
Good. If you could, the board knows pretty much what you're looking to do, but for the benefit of folks who are here or might be watching on TV, if you could give us the lowdown on what you'd like to do.
Sure. One of the families applied to this new show. That's a spinoff of The Biggest Loser, and we're looking to film at their residence for a week, hopefully either the week of the 24th or the week following. We're still locking in our schedule. They're still locking in if they're going to be picked for casting. So we just need permission from the town to film in that neighborhood and on their property. And we'll have some vehicles parked on their street, so we wanted to let everyone know about that.
Okay. Do we have any recommendations or feedback from department heads that we need to be aware of?
Yes, Ms. Chin. I met out on site with Ms. Palumbo and Chief Pagonis, and looking at that area where the street is configured, we don't anticipate any problem, but they will, you know, they will ensure that they will park in the area as designated by the police chief. In addition, the fire department has looked at the roadway and it's indicated that there are no issues there in terms of public safety. We will be requiring, and Ms. Palumbo, on behalf of Arinda Productions, has agreed to having a detail officer at that location during the time in which activity is going on, and it's my understanding that they will also be providing a security detail as well at night. The, there's been a requirement by the Board of Health, which is being met with regard to having any kind of porta potty facility or that kind of thing, and that's, just requires a permission from the Board of Health, but shouldn't be a problem. They will be responsible for all of their own trash and will make sure that the roadway is maintained and put back in the same shape that they got it in. Additionally, there will be no disruption for any trash collection services. The detail officer will be there to make sure that all trash collection in the area is taken up. The fact is, as you can see, the location of the home in question is at the end of the road where it widens, and we just don't anticipate any problem because of that. There are only three or four homes on that stretch of Denault Drive. We've also required them to provide appropriate insurance, naming the town as insured, and they have done that already, so there are no objections, you know, provided that they meet all of the stipulations, which heretofore they've agreed to.
Okay, and we can see from a copy of a form letter that you sent out, it appears that this letter's been sent to other residents on that street in that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's right. We notified every resident on that street.
Okay. If any resident has a question, neighbors have a question that they're not here this evening, maybe find out about this subsequently, have been out of town or whatnot, I assume they should call your office, and then you can direct them to the right.
Right. In addition, Ms. Palumbo was sending out a letter to the neighbors as well, where I presume you will give them a phone number.
Yeah, my contact, phone number, and email, fax line, everything will be on there, and they're, feel free to call me at any time if they have any problems or need a vehicle moved or anything like that, but we don't, you know, we don't want to block any driveways or anything like that, so there shouldn't be a problem in that neighborhood.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board, and then we can go to the audience? Anything up here?
Just one question. The nature of the show, I, obviously, I read the synopsis here, and it's very impressive. Is there any intention among the show's producers to highlight or spotlight the community in which these individuals live at all? In other words, will Wilmington be sort of focused or spotlighted as part of the show?
Yeah, for sure. We'll say where we're from, and then we'll do what we call B-roll, which is a camera guy kind of going around, getting some nice shots of the town and things like that. So we will be saying where they are and showing their community.
In a positive light?
Oh, yes. The show is very positive. For a reality show, I know that might be scary, but the show is very positive. We're hoping to help this family out and, you know, make things better for them.
Thank you.
Anything else up here? Questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none. Should the board take a?
Motion.
A motion, all right. How would you recommend we deal with that in terms of recommendations from police or fire, just in a, subject to all the department heads outlined by you?
All conditions stipulated by the town.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion on the request?
I make a motion that we grant the request with the stipulations that the production company meets all requirements of the town, boards throughout the town of Wilmington.
Shall I get a second? May I second it? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. Have a good night. At not yet being 7:15, why don't we proceed to communications, and then we'll come back to our agenda items at 7:15.
Mr. Chairman, we have a copy of a letter that was sent to you from Mass Development to Commonwealth Agency, indicating that the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency has given preliminary approval to issue a revenue bond on behalf of Textron Systems Corporation. The project, which the board is already aware of since we've reported on this project, is to be located at the Textron site, and the bond would be issued pursuant to Chapter 23G and 40D of the general laws. The policy of the agency is to advise local and regional planning agencies, including the planning board as well as the Board of Selectmen, to ensure that there is no problem with the requests from the town's perspective. And obviously, we've talked about this, the town has been, has already sent a letter in support of this, and we were notified about a month or so ago of the approval. Just to remind folks what we're talking about, Textron Systems Corporation is proposing to upgrade their existing facility, which would include the construction of two new engineering and research buildings, which comprise approximately 325,000 square feet. They would demolish three existing administrative buildings, and then they'd resurface a portion of the demolished area for employee parking. They're expecting that the total cost to be in excess of $75 million. This is a major project, and we're all proud of our efforts to help keep Textron here at that location and to improve their facility. They were making a judgment as to whether or not they were going to be looking elsewhere, and ultimately they've decided to stay here. The bond amount itself is for $40 million. Their expectation is that there would be 300 new employees at this site. Their current employee population stands at 1,075, so they would bring in 300 more employees. They're in the design stages right now. Our expectation is probably a year from now, they would move into the construction phase.
Certainly is good news in terms of keeping jobs in Massachusetts and keeping them here in Wilmington. Being 7:15, we'll return to our agenda items. Our 7:15 appointment is with Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation, and it's regarding a review of planning board articles submitted for inclusion on the May 1st, 2010 Annual Town Meeting warrant. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I understand that you have other commitments tonight. We appreciate you coming in, and we'll get through it as efficiently as we can.
The articles that the planning board is asking to include on the warrant start with Article 22. Article 22 is, affects our floodplain district. We were notified back in December that the Federal Emergency Management Agency was producing final flood elevation determinations for Wilmington, Massachusetts. It is a requirement of the community to then update its zoning bylaw to include citation of those maps, so that residents of the town of Wilmington can continue to participate in the flood insurance program. So this is a quasi-housekeeping article. We received notification back in December that we needed to prepare an article. We have done that with the assistance of Town Council and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, and the wording is as you see in the article, and it primarily identifies and names those brand-new maps.
And just by way of clarification, these maps are the maps that are delineated by FEMA, right?
That's correct.
We're just incorporating them by reference into our bylaw?
That's correct.
Any questions on that one from the board? Okay.
The next few articles, I think the next four, are housekeeping articles. The Board of Appeals, actually, all of the remaining articles are done in conjunction with the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals, through their staff, came to me and made some suggestions about some changes to the zoning bylaw that would assist them as well as citizens in the community. One is to divest themselves of some special permit granting authority, and the second that you'll, second set that you'll see have to do with zoning districts to avoid residents having to come for variances all the time. So the first one has to do with signs and advertising devices. It came to the Board of Appeals' attention sometime this year, that when an applicant comes to the Board of Appeals for a variance for signs, the planning board has never even seen the plan with the new sign. As part of site plan review, we know where the location of their proposed signs are going to be, but a requirement of site plan review does not include their vetting those signs with the planning board. And that, yeah, the same expression was kind of what the Board of Appeals had too. Why are they coming to us at the final stages when all of the site plan work has been okayed? Why are they coming to us now and saying, "We want signs here, there, everywhere. We want big ones, we want little ones," whatever the change to the requirement might be? So we've gone through this bylaw, and what we've done is we've changed the special permit granting authority for an increase in size of signs, or an increase in number of signs, if they're requested, to the planning board under site plan review. So the whole site will be taken into account, including the location of the signs during site plan review. Special permit would be granted if someone needed a sign that exceeds what the zoning bylaw allows, either in number or in size. Board of Appeals will maintain its special permit granting authority for those signs that are located in the right-of-way of roads. Generally, that would be the church, signs for church denominations.
And the Board of Appeals, has it, as a board, taken a position on this?
They have. I reviewed the changes in the signs, in all of these bylaws, actually. I reviewed with them. The planning board action. So one other change to this sign bylaw, too, is that we're going to allow awning signs, which you may have seen. Those have not been specifically allowed in the bylaw. They'll be considered as replacement to a regular wall sign. So the area of the wording in the awning will be counted or measured as their sign require, or their sign allowance.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Just for informational purposes, it makes perfect sense to me that you go through, an applicant goes through site plan process, and rather than proceeding to the Board of Appeals for a special permit or variance, it stays within that approval process. How is it being handled for properties which have never gone through site plan review just because they predated that process? They go back to planning board?
Yes, they'd come in with a new site plan and show us how it's going to affect the site itself.
Gotcha. All right.
Chairman, if I may, real briefly, I guess on page seven, and this is my ignorance, projecting sign, how does it differ, or can you define for me what that implies and what changes are being affected there? Down at the bottom.
This is a very minor change. It's really something that the building inspector asked us to do. At an exterior doorway, there can be a sign that sticks out from the building.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And we've just switched the wording slightly on this. I'm not, actually, when I read it over today, I wasn't clear myself why we had changed it, because it's pretty much the same as we have had before. So we did say right at the beginning, one projecting sign at each exterior doorway, rather than the way it was before, that said a business in the industrial district may erect one projecting sign.
Is it, is the change, Carol, recalling our conversations, that it's not just limited to the industrial district?
Yes, that is. It does broaden it. Yep. You're right.
Anything else? Okay, next.
The next one has to do with wireless communication facilities. What has been the normal practice of late is that we have a number of wireless communication companies that co-locate on existing signs, which is exactly what we want. What's been happening is that they have been coming to the Board of Appeals for a special permit for co-location or for changing their equipment, or adding another company to an existing tower. They've been going to the Board of Appeals for a special permit. The planning board has been waiving site plan review if the applicant is not increasing the base, the enclosure that it has at the base of the tower, is not increasing that, is not increasing the height of the tower. So we're not, from a planning perspective or from a Board of Appeals perspective, they're not concerned about the number of companies that are locating on a single tower, as long as the tower can support it. More concerned, the concern is with brand-new ones, brand-new facilities. So we're leaving, the Board of Appeals will have, continue to have special permit granting authority over any new tower that is constructed. But anybody that wants to change their equipment, or add another company to their tower, to an existing tower, and they're not changing that enclosure at the bottom to make it any bigger, then that will go to the planning board to amend that special permit just for those instances, not any of the new ones. The initial grant of a special permit will be through the Board of Appeals, but if there are minor tweaks later, or an addition of another company, that will stay with the planning board, as we've done during site plan review, which will cut down on companies having to pay additional fees. And it'll cut down on their time, too, actually. Article 25 takes the special permit out of hammerhead lots. As you're probably aware, a lot of hammerhead lots are created during subdivision control. Some of them are created during the approval-not-required process in A and R plan on existing streets. The bylaw is very specific about what a hammerhead lot must be, how many square feet it must contain, what the frontage has to be. The Board of Appeals really has never had any leeway. They are simply taking a look at a plan, seeing that those criteria are met, and assigning a special permit. So rather than, again, put people through having to go for another public hea, or for a public hearing, pay fees for that, we're dropping the special permit. We're allowing them by right. So they'll simply show them on the plan, have to meet the same requirements that they've always had to meet, but the planning board will sign off. That will be the final approval.
You know, it strikes me, the common theme here is that these bylaws are bad for the lawyers and good for everybody else. It seems to be cutting down on the process more than anything.
Trying to. It's also a time saver for people, things that, you know, we're going, we know we're going to grant, things that are very prescribed in the bylaw and we know are not a problem. We've known that from experience over time. It seems foolish, and it seemed foolish from the Board of Appeals' perspective as well, to make folks go through a public hearing, pay fees, in some instances actually have to hire an engineer to do plans, when it could be done in a much simpler way. The final one in this group are accessory apartments, and again, we're holding to the, pretty much the same bylaw that we've always had, same requirements for accessory apartments, but we are dropping the requirement that it be a special permit. There are a couple of things that have been added to this bylaw. One is a requirement that a deed restriction be placed on the property, saying that this is an accessory apartment, and it has to be, one of the units in the property has to be owner-occupied. And that's the largest change. There are a couple of omissions of things that really didn't need to be there.
Questions on that one? Okay.
And the last set, rather than go through them specifically, because I don't have maps for you yet, those will be ready on Tuesday evening for the public hearing. Just want to explain what we're trying to do with this. The Article 27 and 28 are articles that are, represent parcels of land that had a funny zoning district stuck in the middle of them. There's one on Main Street, actually, two parcels on Main Street, where there's an R-20 zone sandwiched in the middle of general business. And all that does is cause problems for somebody attempting to use the lot. So what we've done is we've simply made the entire lot consistent and made it general business on the Main Street one. The other one is a residential property that had a lot line, or a zoning line, rather, that cut a triangle through the lot, and so we've pushed the zoning line to, from R-60 to R-20, to make the lot consistent.
And that one, you're referring to which article?
That is 28.
Okay, so you took them up together, same purpose, same idea.
Mm-hmm. The remaining planning board articles are, again, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, just a quick question.
Sure.
Location, 188 Main Street, where is that?
It's where the Sonic is going. 120, 220 Main Street is where Sonic is going. And I think, Mr. McCoy, the other parcel, maybe C and J Lawnmore, in the very back of those lots, for some reason, when, I think when the rink rezoned, I, however that article was written, it left these funny little pieces of R-20 zoning, not attached to anything else.
Really?
They're small, they're so small, you couldn't put a house on them. They don't have frontage. They're just stuck in the middle of their lot. We had an opinion when we were doing the site plan review from Town Council, because it was plunk in the middle of the, or not in the middle, it was toward the back of the Sonic lot. We asked for an opinion of Town Council, what we were to do with that, and pretty much, Council just said, "Ignore it and take care of it." It just doesn't have any meaning to have that.
I agree. It makes sense to go along with the frontage of Main Street.
Yeah.
Because it seems like it's landlord.
It would be, but it isn't even a distinct parcel. It's just a zoning district in the middle of somebody's parcel. It's not the same as the rest of the parcel.
I'm trying to recall. I mean, I think I was serving on the planning board back, way back when, and then was tutor at the time. I can't recall R-20.
No. It may have been simply an error in how the article was written. I don't think there was any intent to leave it that way.
Where again is it? It's between what the hockey rink and where Sonic is, right in the middle, smack?
Yeah, in the back.
I saw there's no residential homes that are butted anyway.
No.
All right, it makes sense then.
No, no.
That makes sense. All right, thank you.
The remaining planning board articles are an attempt to bring some parcels, we're going to be doing this for a number of years. We're going to be bringing a few of these forward every year. But basically, what this does is, on some of the outlying areas of town, back, probably in the 50s, maybe the early 60s, when there was an attempt to slow growth in a lot of communities in Massachusetts, it appears that the planning board took the outlying areas of the community where there was less development and rezoned a lot of it to R-60. And basically, what happened is, on Salem Street and Shawsheen, a number of others, the article must have been written that from Salem Street, you went back 100 or 150 feet, and everything beyond that was R-60. Everything close to it was whatever the zoning district was at the time, R-10, R-20, mostly R-20. And what that has done in some of that back area, because there were existing subdivision plans that had been filed in those areas, over the years, development has occurred, but it's occurred at the R-10 and R-20 that those subdivisions were originally approved under. So we have lots of homeowners in R-60 zones that have R-10 and R-20 lots. So we've gone through and taken a very rough shot at a couple of these areas that the planning board, that the zoning Board of Appeals identified for us, and we have suggested for rezoning those developed lots that were developed as R-10 or R-20. So we're downzoning from R-60 to R-10 or R-20 on the rest of these articles. What this does is, it means that when a homeowner wants to put in a pool, put a porch on his house, make an addition, he has to conform to the underlying zoning, the R-10 or R-20, and not the R-60 setbacks. What the R-60 setbacks do in those zones is they make it virtually impossible for anybody to make those additions, those simple additions that any of us might do, without going to the Board of Appeals for a variance. The variance process is supposed to be very difficult to achieve, and so the Board of Appeals is caught. They've got land that was clearly developed as R-10 or R-20, and yet they're imposing R-60 setback requirements on those lots. And it should be very difficult for folks to get a variance for that. I think it puts the Board of Appeals in a really tough position, having to deal with those. So we're trying to look at them, and again, we're not, we're not doing individual lots. We're doing an area that's clearly been developed. We're not asking to have rezoned empty parcels, because we're not looking to increase development, but simply to allow folks to be able to do with their lot what they would normally be in a different zoning district. So you might see, when you see these maps, you might see a couple of town-owned parcels that are in there, because they're surrounded by land that's been developed. I don't think you're going to see any vacant land, other than a couple of town-owned parcels that don't make, didn't make sense to carve them out of the, out of the zone, the new zone.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, Carol. I hear what you said a moment ago about buildable lots, and I can understand the fact that some people want to put a swim and pool, but... some people want to put a swim and pool, but is there any hard numbers? I mean, you're going from R-60 to R-10, it's a complete—that's a really dramatic change. Are there any people that own homes in an R-60, where it's now going to be R-10, that they could develop a lot on their property, or not?
No. If—if I've missed one, there might be one. What I told Mr. Kyra when we were going over the articles was, I'm 95% sure that there is no land that can be developed out there. Could there be—in a couple of instances, could there be some trading of land to perhaps create another lot? I couldn't see that, but when you get these maps, you can take a look.
I can trust your judgment, because I think that would be a valid question. Somebody would say, "You're going R-60, R-10, we're going to get four, five more house lots in one parcel?" I mean, that would be the projection that we're projecting out there.
Absolutely.
But if that's not the case, then we need to really know that, and hopefully that is—and I believe it's the case. If you're saying that's the case, I believe it. I just want to make sure that's the case.
When these notices went out to the folks in that neighbor—in the neighborhoods that we're looking at, a number of people have come into the office and asked that same question.
I can imagine.
You know, are we opening this up for additional development? Not at all. That's not the intent here at all.
If I may, that—that—we've had long discussions about that. It's—it's a very valid point that you're bringing up. What—and that was one of the main criteria, that we not create any additional house lots. There were two—you know, two focuses here. One, not to create any additional house lots, and number two, to be current resident—resident-friendly for those folks who are coming all the time, and not being able to do what really everybody else in town is able to do with their property, because of the—the strange zoning that they're in.
That makes sense. I'm all for the changes. I mean, the bottom line is times are tough, so folks, they want to add on to their home, or if there's another process, instead of going to Board of Appeals, like you said, hire an engineer or hire a professional to bring them through the, you know, maze of local government, and with the bottom line is, it can get done very simply. And, you know, I'm all favor of something to folks, as long as, you know, it's understood that, you know, if you're downsizing, like we just stated. But no, it makes sense that if that is the case, I believe that's the case, and I think it's probably better for the community. You know, I want to—I'd make sure that if I was living in that area, I want to make sure that I'm not going to have five houses pop up behind my home.
Right.
And that's what's not going to happen, and I think folks need to know that, and it's all the better for the people in that area.
One of the parcels—or one of the maps is McGrane Road, and you—you may know that at the end of McGrane, there is a subdivision that's been proposed. I think there are eight houses on McGrane. They're all R-10s. They're all 10,000-ish square foot lots. And those people really can't do anything on their property with R-60 setbacks. So that was one of the ones that we included, but we did not include that big parcel at the back that is being proposed for development. That's going to be a conservation subdivision, so it's going to have smaller lots and cluster zoning through that process. But we felt it was—that particular one was a real—a real issue, because here there's folks out in front with R-10 house lots are now sitting there with R-60 zoning. So it felt as though that was a more equitable situation for them to rezone that area. But somebody did come right in and say, "It isn't the back, is it?" And I said, "No."
No, you're right, the setbacks. It was a little bit easier, folks living there want to add on, they want to keep their kids living there, because times are tough, instead of, you know, affordability. I mean, I think it's a win-win situation for the existing people who live in this community to expand on their home. I think—I'm all for that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? And I think those comments applied to everything through Article 34, which is the end of the planning board-proposed articles, right?
That's correct.
Very good. Appreciate your time. Again, I know you had other commitments tonight. Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you.
That we can move to our 7:30 agenda item, which is a Board of Selectmen discussion regarding proposed nonpetition articles for the annual town meeting warrant and town manager's review of the annual town meeting warrant. And just a quick note for the board, I'm—I'm sure that the board noticed, we have a board-to-consider item later on the list, on the agenda, for considering closing and signing the warrant. And typically, we would take that up at the appointment stage, but since we have a request later on that speaks to that, I figure we'll just put that off till the end of the meeting. So without anything further, if you could, Mr. Kyra, go through the proposed nonpetition articles.
Mr. Chairman, the warrant is before you. As you stated, the election is the first article, and that will be held on Saturday, April 24th. The polls open at 8:00, they close—8:01, and they close at 8:00 PM in the evening. The election will be for two selectmen for the term of three years, three members of the school committee for the term of three years, one member of the housing authority for the term of five years, one member of the housing authority for the term of two years, and a member of the regional vocational technical school committee for the term of three years. The following week will be the town meeting section to hear the rest of the session, to hear the rest of the articles. That will be held at the high school gymnasium and will begin at 10:30 in the morning. The first article to be taken up will be Article 2, to hear reports of committees and act thereon. There will—there are no committees that were asked to report back from the town meeting, so we will move to pass over that article. Article 3 will ask the town to raise and appropriate from any funds for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years. Again, no unpaid bills from previous years, and so we will move beyond that. Article 4 is a standard article, which authorizes the treasurer, collector, with your approval, to enter into banking agreements with banks in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in order for the town to do its regular banking business. And then Article 5 is the budget article, the standard budget article, in which we will review all of the operating budgets in the town. And I suspect that you've all are familiar with the operating budget material, which we went over here at the board's meeting back at the beginning of February. Finance Committee has completed their review. They've met with every department head, with the school superintendent, with the school superintendent from Shawsheen Tech. And the next meeting, of course, for the Finance Committee will be at the public hearing stage, a week from Tuesday on March 16th. We move from there to Article 6, which begins the capital expenditures. The town is asking to be able to purchase four replacement police cruisers at a cost of $115,760. Again, if the board wants specific information on these cruisers, these are frontline police cruisers, we typically will do this each year and then recycle the other cruisers. I'd be happy to discuss that. I think you have all of that in the budget material, but just stop me if you have any questions. The fire department is requesting a replacement fire chief's vehicle for $36,700, and the public buildings department is requesting the purchase of a replacement van truck for And the final capital equipment item with regard to rolling stock is from the Department of Public Works, where they're asking to purchase a three-quarter ton pickup truck and a replacement sidewalk plow for the highway division. The pickup truck is $30,100, and the sidewalk plow would be $110,500. Article 7 seeks to appropriate $44,000 for the purchase of new mobile and portable radios to enable the conversion of the communication system for the fire department. Article 8 has to appropriate $53,000, first for the replacement of approximately 3,400 square feet of roof at the Herndon Tavern, which we estimate to cost about $35,000, and then for the replacement of 2,000 square feet of roof area at the old South School on Chestnut Street, which we anticipate costing about $18,000. Article 9 seeks to appropriate $125,000 to undertake various improvements and repairs to both municipal and school facilities. That would include, but not be limited to, addressing energy efficiencies, plant operations, mechanical systems, structural issues, and code compliance. That would be administered through the public buildings department to meet both emergencies as well as to undertake energy efficiency operations. Article 10 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate money, determine how that should be done, to be expended for the following purpose. After the town establishes a school building committee, which would be established in order to generally monitor the application process and to advise the town manager during any construction, consistent with all the requirements of both the town charter and the CMRs, that would enable us to conduct a feasibility study for the Wilmington High School and to also enable us to receive a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Essentially, we are looking to go into the next phase, as this board is aware. They have approved the town going forward to do the study, which enabled us to apply for funding for the next phase of a high school project, which would be the feasibility study phase, where a firm would be hired, a project manager would be hired, and together with the town and the school building authority, we would come up with conceptual—a conceptual design and a cost analysis for a new high school. And we'd be coming to the town meeting to ask for those funds. We're estimating at this point that the total amount for the funding that we would ask for would be $1 to $1.2 million to take us right to conceptual—conceptual drawings and conceptual design, of which approximately half would be paid for by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Once that is completed, again, we would have to go both to the town meeting and to a town election, similar to what Tewksbury just went through, to determine whether or not we would build a new high school. You will recall that the initial review focused on the specific area, the high school itself, and that's where some of the conceptual design came from the—or the schematic came from the initial study firm. This—this would also review other areas to determine if that, in fact, would be the best area to go forward with. And it's my understanding that the chairman is going to be scheduling a meeting at some point in the next meeting or two with the superintendent of schools to come in and give a more detailed presentation of what this process would be.
Right. We'll look to do that, hopefully at the next meeting. If not, then the meeting after, but certainly well before town meeting, to give the board and residents and anyone else that's interested an opportunity to hear more about the—the process and how the funding mechanism works, and exactly what's included in this article as opposed to decisions to move forward with the actual construction.
Article 11 would—is a standard article we have each year that would enable us to transfer into various line items of the current fiscal year budget, in this case, the 2010 budget, to make—make transfers. This doesn't ask for any additional money, but it just would take money from one account and put it into another account in the event that there are any deficits or surpluses available. Right now, the fiscal year 2010 budget is looking pretty good. We do have some expected deficits in—in certain of the accounts, but at this point, we've been able to project surplus money in various accounts, where we don't think there's going to be any problem going forward. That said, you know, we—we obviously can't predict the—the weather, and I—but I do think that although we're pretty much at our limit right now in terms of budget, funding available in other accounts such as trash, where we've seen such positive savings as a result of the single-stream recycling and the favorable contracts that we entered into, will enable us to really cover any—any significant overage at this point. Article 12 asks to continue the town senior citizen tax work-off program. As you know, we've been doing this for about 11 to 12 years now, and we are—actually, it's probably closer to 15 years.
I think it was 95 and 96, somewhere in there.
Time flies, right. And we're asking to appropriate $15,360. That would accommodate up to 24 seniors who would earn a maximum of $640 to do work for various school and town departments. Article 13 would appropriate $6,000 to assist with the observance of both Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Article 14 is a standard article that we've had appropriating $1,500, or $750 each to assist the veterans of foreign wars in the American Legion with regard to their clubhouse. Article 15 is also a standard article, which authorizes, or in this case, reauthorizes, revolving accounts pursuant to mass general laws. In this case, we will be asking for the reauthorization of both the compost bin recycling and the septic system sewer upgrade program. Again, this just continues the program in place. The programs run on the basis of a revolving account, where the funding comes from those folks who either buy the compost bins, and the money goes back in to continue to buy the—the bins, or in the case of the subsurface sewage program, loans are provided to folks at a low rate through a better—through a program that's initially funded through the state, where they make a payback, and then that goes in to pay for additional septic system upgrades for other families. Article 16 seeks to transfer funds that represent the amount of proceeds that the town has received from the MTBE products liability litigation settlements. You're aware that this was something the town got involved with. There were about 80 districts in Massachusetts that got involved with this litigation, and as a result, last year, in the first year of the litigation, was where the bulk of the money came in. It came in at $858,000, which we transferred to the water department. This year, we'll be seeking to take the additional funds that have come in over the past year for that same purpose from other companies, and you see that each time we—we come forward here at the Board of Selectmen. And this amount would be $88,561.20. Article 17 was a proposal from the Board of Library Trustees and the library director, asking to—for the town to name the bicentennial room at the Wilmington Memorial Library in honor of Jim Banda, specifically in recognition of his 25 years of devoted service as a member of the Board of Library Trustees, and certainly in further recognition of his exemplary public service that he's provided to the citizens of the town of Wilmington. You all know him as a former member of the Board of Selectmen for many years. He served on the planning board as well, and for the past 25 years on the Board of Library Trustees, has certainly been one of Wilmington's most distinguished citizens. And the—the Board of Library Trustees seeks to honor him for his past service.
Yeah, I—I suspect there's going to be so many people that want to offer a comment at town meeting. I'm going to get mine in quick and early and just say that I think Jim really personifies what it means to be a volunteer in Wilmington, and he's—he's the kind of guy that we're extremely proud of, and I expect there to be a unanimous vote at town meeting. So I just wanted to put in my congratulations and my two cents ahead of time.
Article 18, you will recall that Selectmen Semaglia spoke specifically about this article many, many months ago, when we were trying to determine ownership of the bridge at the Lowell Street Crossing that goes over Maple Meadow Brook. And we've determined that, in fact, it is owned by the town as opposed to the Commonwealth. And so we're seeking to designate that particular area as a lasting memorial to the men and women of the town of Wilmington, who have served in the United States military, by naming that bridge the Veterans Memorial Bridge. Article 19 would authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute— Article 19 would authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute an extension to the Redding Municipal Light Department Agreement that was first authorized back in 1990, and it has to be extended every 10 years. It's extended in advance, so in this case, it was last extended through 2020. The legislation now requires it to be extended an additional 10 years. The reason for that is it would take about that long if you decided to change your, the way you procure electricity and establish your own light district, for example. We've, as Selectman McCoy mentioned, when Mr. Cameron from Redding Light came in a couple of meetings ago, we've enjoyed a very good relationship with Redding Light, and I think, for the most part, residents have been satisfied. We do receive in lieu of payments now in excess of $700,000 a year, which is, was a very good thing that came out of that initial legislation, along with representation on the Citizens Advisory Board. So this would enable us to go forward for an additional 10 years, and specifically, it authorizes the Board of Selectmen to do that. So the Selectmen, the town meeting would merely authorize the board, and then it would be up to the board to execute the extension. Article 20 is something that really is a bit of a housekeeping article in terms of the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington. It has to do with prohibited parking. Right now, the fire regulations in this particular section say that it shall be unlawful to obstruct or block a private way with a vehicle or other means so as to prevent access by fire apparatus or equipment to any multiple-family building, stores, shopping centers, schools, and places of public assembly. We get a little bit concerned with the word multiple-family building, and no mention of a regular family building, and it's because when this, when this bylaw came up, we believe the intent of the bylaw way back when was really multiple homes, as opposed to what we now think of as a multiple-family building. So it, someone could look at this and say, well, it's okay then to block a single home, an apparatus from getting into a single home, when of course, that's not okay. So we're just making a simple change that simply says it'll be unlawful to obstruct or block any traveled private way with a vehicle or other means so as to prevent the access. And the second part of that is also a housekeeping-type article. Right now, it says any object or vehicle obstructing or blocking any fire lane or private way may be removed or towed by a towing service under the direction of a police officer at the expense of the owner without liability to the town. It now would say, assuming this gets passed, any object or vehicle obstructing or blocking any fire lane or traveled private way in violation, violation of this section may be removed. The point was being made by town council that we should be calling it a traveled private way. That's where our jurisdiction would be. Article 21 is a correction article in that when these bylaws were voted, the comprehensive stormwater management regulations and the excavation and trench safety bylaws that took place back at the 2009 town meeting, they listed the wrong section. And so the bylaw itself doesn't change. Town council consulted with the Attorney General's Office and suggested a simple article that would simply renumber the sections. Otherwise, we would have 248s and 249s, so now what we have is a 50 and a 51. And so that was just a scrivener's error, actually, and that's being corrected. I trust by unanimous consent, the board does not want me to go over the planning board articles again, which they just heard, and that would bring you then to the petitioned, the petitioned articles, and as is custom, I will just mention what they are. If anybody has any questions, I can attempt to address them, but typically, these petitioned articles are addressed by the petitioner at the meeting on the 16th. First, we have a request under Article 35 from Vita and Marie Ciceroni, who seek to purchase town-owned land. They're looking to purchase 5,250 square feet of land owned by the town on Cherry Street, which is right off of Jacobs. Article 36 is a petitioned article by John and Linda DeBergoziyan, to ask to relinquish an easement right that was on their property that enabled school buses to turn around at that particular site on Marion Street. It's no longer necessary for that to happen, as Marion Street has been built out, and it doesn't create a problem. We've received concurrence from the school department, as well as the police department and the planning board, but the only way to change that, it seems quite bureaucratic, but the only way to change that was to come to a town meeting and have them relinquish the easement formally. Article 37 was a petitioned article by Craig Newhouse, who asked to buy what he felt was town-owned land on Assessors Map 6, Parcel 20. In fact, that's not town-owned land. That land is privately owned. It's located on Poplar Street, so I expect, although it has to go on the town meeting warrant, that it's likely to be withdrawn unless there's a way that the town can sell somebody else's property. I haven't figured that out yet, but we'll work on that. Article 38 is also a petitioned article from Craig Newhouse, who seeks to purchase, in total, six different parcels of land, all which join, two of those parcels, 139 and 140, have 7,840 and 5,663 square feet respectively, and they are behind Presidential Avenue? Presidential Road? Help me out here.
Presidential Way?
Presidential Way. Presidential Way, with frontage on Mary Street. Mary Street is a paper street. Presidential Way, as you know, is off of Butwell in that, in that area. In addition, abutting that property, Parcels 141, 142, 143, and 144, which have between 2,175 and 4,350 square feet, the whole total being about 26,000 square feet among all these parcels in an R-20 zone, and those four lots are also behind Presidential Way with frontage on a different paper street. Stanley is the name of that street. As the board is aware, all of this goes through a public process, beginning with a review by the Property Review Board. They have already publicly advertised and have notified all of the respective petitioners that there will be a hearing that will be held in conjunction with the planning board and Finance Committee Public Hearing on the 16th, and then following that, I believe it's the next day, there's a public meeting where they can also come in and talk to the Property Review Board, which is a board that I established to assist me in making a determination of surplus or non-surplus, to determine whether this would go forward at town meeting. Article 39 is a petition by John Brown, asking the town to accept a section of the general law that would enable officers of the professional firefighters of Massachusetts, elected officers, to be able to work on union matters without any loss of pay or benefits. In other words, during their regularly scheduled work hours for the town, rather than work for the town, they would be allowed to perform their elected responsibilities for the organization that they represent with no loss of pay. The town would, would have to pay them to perform for the union. Article 40 is a petitioned article by Kevin McDonald, who asks, and I would probably read this rather than paraphrase it, that pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, asking the voters to require the town manager to post in the foyer of the town hall the name or names of any employees, consultants, or subcontractors who are receiving a pension from the town of Wilmington in addition to their salary from the town of Wilmington. This notice shall be in bold red lettering to allow the taxpayers of the town of Wilmington to determine if they are being gouged out of their tax dollars. Article 41 is a petition from Kevin McDonald that asks town meeting voters to allow food donations in lieu of library fines to go to the Wilmington Food Pantry all year round. Article 42 is a petitioned article by Kevin McDonald to ask the town meeting to vote to eliminate the position of water superintendent and have those duties transferred to the Department of Public Works Superintendent. And Article 43 is a petition by Kevin McDonald to conduct an investigation for the purposes of determining if, and I'm quoting, "the half-million-dollar comprehensive water study was a fraudulent study, to see if the company that conducted the study was in conflict of interest being a subcontractor for the MWRA and the town of Wilmington, to see if the study was manipulated to get the town of Wilmington to participate in paying the nearly $6 billion in MWRA debt, and to see why wells were not drilled nor tested, and to see why the state regulation 313 CMR 3.00 was not complied with." Those are the articles that will be before the town. Mr. Chairman, unless, assuming the board votes them, it's certainly your authority to put this on the warrant one way or another, or if the board intends to add anything. And as you indicated, we'll take this up at the end?
Yes.
Correspondence from Mark Profiro, the treasurer of the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District, regarding the fiscal year 2011 budget. He indicates that the school committee at Shawshank Tech unanimously approved the budget that was presented by the school superintendent, and he indicates that the town of Wilmington's share of the apportionment for the, for the budget, which would be our assessment, would be $3,127,084. I can tell you at this time that that certainly fits in with what the town felt we would need. We eventually budgeted for about $3,204,000, and again, that's based upon what I believe may be a change in the governor's projection of no cut in local aid. Mr. Lyons has based his number, as I understand it, on the governor's revenue projections of no cuts in local aid. If the gov, if that final local aid number, as expected, comes down, the town would have a little cushion going forward at town meeting with regard to Shawshank Tech. We have an MMA action alert, and again, this really segues into what we were just talking about. Looking, the MMA is looking for a local aid resolution to level fund local aid. Essentially, what this is telling us is that the Senate now, and the Senate Ways and Means Chair, Steve Panagiotakis, has looked at the revenue numbers and is projecting that there may be a 3% to 5% cut in local aid from fiscal year 2010 to 2011. Again, that's less than what we anticipate, but it is a greater cut than what the budgets, than what the presentation has been made by Governor Patrick.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mike and dollars and cents, how much money would that come up to ballpark?
Three, 5% would probably be about $8,600,000, and 3% would be about $300,000, and I'll, I'll check those numbers.
Between 3 and 5, yeah. Thank you, thank you. I don't hear the board making any motion to send out letters to our legislative delegation. That's probably because we all appreciate the fact that they know full well how important local aid is to us. I don't think it's too, too big of a leap of faith to assume that they know that, but certainly if the board thinks we need any motion, throw it out there.
I think they're certainly aware of it. We've had conversation with all of them, and they've all been supportive at this point.
Yeah, in fact, they've all specifically indicated.
Specifically indicated, so it probably would, probably wouldn't make sense.
Waste of paper.
Well, yeah, I think it would almost look like we're not paying attention to what they've already told us, but whatever the board wants to do.
Well, we leave it to the manager to continue to communicate with them, which she's, which she's done.
I can, I can still contact them, no problem. In terms of this next piece of correspondence, we have correspondence from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, asking us to assess any damage that came from the winter storm from February 23 through February 27. You remember the, the problems that many communities faced. We did have some problems certainly during that time period when we lost electricity in the Butters Row, Chestnut Street, Burlington Ave area. Four major trees were uprooted on Butters Row. This gives me really an opportunity to speak to the outstanding job that the Public Works Department did, particularly the tree division, Scott Smith and Kevin Mason and Michael Underwood, and all the others that pitched in, and the collaborative effort with fire and police really came through. We actually have had many calls and comments and communications from folks who've either written letters or stopped by just to say what a good job they did during that time period. What this asks us to do is now to detail any of our costs in the event there is going to be any funding coming through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, either through the feds, through the state, but more likely the feds. The MEMA would, MEMA would submit a ballpark estimate to FEMA to indicate that there were these problems in town, and we would be reimbursed to some extent in the event it is declared as, as a disaster area of some type. So we're doing that work. We actually already did it, and have submitted it, and I'll speak more to it as we go forward. The board has correspondence from Robert Groves, who's the Director of the United States Department of Commerce, regarding the Census Bureau. It's called a Take 10 Challenge, and he's really asking officials, town officials, particularly elected officials, to bring attention to the federal census, and Chairman Newhouse asked that this letter be brought forward so we could do it at this meeting, and to encourage people to return those census forms. I will say that I believe the federal census information hit the mailboxes today, and my office knows that all too well because we got calls all day today from folks who were wondering whether they're supposed to fill that out, because they filled out the town census. The town census is an annual census that is conducted in January, and obviously, we want that to be filled out. If you haven't, you, you should, and we hope you would do that. But this is once every 10 years, conducted by the feds. They note that back at the 2000 census, they were able to garner about 72% of the households just by this outreach. The other 28%, they, they really have to expend an awful lot of money hiring folks to go out and physically visit all of those properties. In this case, you can avoid that by simply taking that form that you receive in the mail, filling it out, and sending it, sending it back, so we're really hoping that people will do that. So we're really hoping that people will do that. It's really important in terms of grant opportunities and elected representation, so we would ask folks to do that. We have a letter from the MAPC and the MBTA Advisory Board announcing the municipal elections to the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organizations. You are, I'm sure, familiar with this. It comes out every year, and in this case, they note the various dates of importance. If the chief elected official of a community, in this case, it would be Mr. Newhouse, were interested, he's the only person that would be eligible and could be nominated if he wanted to serve on the MPO, and then they note candidate's night and then the time for the election. So they outline all of the various procedures, and that's available to you. I'm pleased to advise the board, at least formally, and I know I did that certainly by email last week and in the packages, that Business Week has recognized the town of Wilmington in a recent publication as one of America's best affordable suburbs. The magazine did a, some type of review of suburbs in America, and labeled their review "America's Best Affordable Suburbs," and then from that selected one community from every state. And I'm pleased to tell you that we received a very pleasant surprise, and we began to hear from a number of residents to say, "Have you heard that?" And we did. Wilmington was selected in Massachusetts, and I think that, as has been said at this table, you know, we put out a pretty good product for a reasonable amount of money, both in terms of comparative tax rates, but also the fact that where some communities are charging upwards of, and you saw this in the revenue review, four and five thousand dollars to go to kindergarten, Wilmington charges zero. Some communities are charging up to twelve hundred dollars and more for kids to play sports, Wilmington doesn't charge. Wilmington is not charging people for trash collection or for other activities, transportation charges, et cetera. And I think at the same time, we offer an awful lot of services. So this was a nice recognition, and the board, I think, can be proud of.
I will tell you the day that you, that you brought this to our attention, this email was, not your email, but the link to the Business Week article was viral on the internet among my associates and colleagues and friends in Wilmington, and lots of people were talking about it. So yours was the first one I saw, and then I started seeing it popping in from a lot of other people. I think a lot of people in Wilmington were very proud of that, that report. Certainly, I was too, and I think you should be proud of yourself as well, Mr. Kyra.
Thank you.
I would just say, not only that's great news for officials here in the town of Wilmington, but the residents as a whole, the inhabitants of the town, it's a great place to live, to raise a family, and I can understand making some changes in the bylaws to allow our children to stay in town. I'm all for that, and I think it speaks volumes. And we do give a lot of service, a great bank for our buck in this community, and as the manager stated, there's no user fees in this community. The buses keep on rolling, we haven't sent out pink slips. We can't, like you say, look at crystal ball, what's going to happen next year, but we can only take care of what happens today and hopefully look at tomorrow. So I think it's a reflection as a community as a whole, and the residents should be very proud of its officials, and the officials are proud of the community, and I think that's what it's all about, and I think we've done a great job here on the board collectively. We've done everything in a civil manner in taking care of the people's business. We may have differences of opinions, but the people's business is getting taken care of, and I think it's a, you know, a strong reflection of what we've been doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I had comments too, but I think it's been well said, so that's enough.
Mr. Chairman, we have more good news. We have correspondence from Andrew Kingsley, who's the Assistant Director for Common Cause in Massachusetts, who is announcing that an e-government award with distinction will be presented to the town of Wilmington. We received that information in early March, just to let you know what happens here. Each year, Common Cause of Massachusetts recognizes cities and towns that have made important governance information available online, and they recognize them by awarding them with an e-government award for displaying important governance documents on their websites. In addition, they take it a step further and award certain communities with that award of distinction for posting additional records. They did a review back in January and was in contact with my office, and specifically Beverly Dalton from my office did a great deal of work on this, along with the assistance of others, and they determined that Wilmington would receive, would be one of the communities to receive an e-government award with distinction. Just briefly, what that means is that we have met all of their criteria by making sure that agendas and minutes and zoning bylaws and town meeting resolves, that inhabitant bylaws are all posted on the website, and then in addition, we've done it in such a way that gives us the distinction award because we've made sure that a year's history of all past governing board minutes have been on the agenda, as well as the community calendars and agendas and minutes for the school committees and for other boards as well. So when they made their review, we were selected. If anybody is interested in attending the ceremony that will be held at the State House on March sixteenth, let me know. I'm not able to be there on that particular day, but I would be really pleased if somebody on this board or would be interested in attending to receive the recognition on behalf of the town.
I think that's great, Mike, and I also think it shows the open government that we do run here in Wilmington. It's also important to know that the website is in the process of being upgraded right now as well, so it's only going to get better.
Yeah, this is an award on the old website. Imagine, you can just imagine how we're going to do on the new one.
We also have a nice letter from Charles Anton, the president of Anton, because the town of Wilmington was involved in collecting coats for kids. And I just wanted you to know that employees here at Town Hall participated in the Coats for Kids Collection Drive, and other residents brought in some of these coats, and we were part of a drive that ended up bringing in over fifty-eight thousand winter coats for folks of all ages during this past winter season. I think that, I'm sorry, we have, now we have correspondence that I guess would segue into the Board to Consider item. Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence from Mark Nelson. He wrote to town officials regarding an article for town meeting and submitted an affidavit in support of verifying the signatures of a town meeting petition that he filed. As you know from a prior report, he did submit a petitioned article to the town clerk's office on the last day of, that articles could be submitted, February fifth, when the town clerk reviewed the article and the petitioners, the signatures, she determined that it did not have ten registered voters listed, that it had only nine. Mr. Nelson is protesting that, and he is asking that the petition that he submitted be placed on the warrant for the town meeting. You also have before you a memorandum from the town clerk, who writes that this memorandum is in regardless certified letter received by the town and just referenced in the correspondence from Mr. Nelson. She indicates that she sent the director of elections for the Secretary of State's office, Michelle Tassanari, a fax of Mr. Nelson's petitioned article, timestamped to by her office on Friday, February fifth, at four oh seven P. M., and that Ms. Tassanari was in agreement that the signature was not legible and therefore should not have been certified. Ms. Tassanari also directed the town clerk to pull the voter cards for all the residents listed at the particular address, which there were three, to look at all the signatures. And you have all of this background. She indicates that none of the voter card signatures match the signature on Mr. Nelson's petitioned articles, and she so had advised Mr. Nelson. We do have a copy of the communication that was sent from the Secretary of State's office to Ms. George from Michelle Tassanari, who writes, "I am writing to confirm our telephone conversation regarding the state regulations for the certification of names on nomination papers and petitions. I have attached a copy of the regulations for your review pursuant to the applicable CMRs. The registrars cannot certify a name if the name is illegible." In addition, we sent information to town council, asking for his advice, and town council indicated that he concurred with the Secretary of State's review and agreed with the determination made by the town clerk. Those are the two pieces of correspondence, Mr. Chairman, and the board is being asked to formally consider the request of Mr. Nelson to place the petitioned article on the warrant for the 2010 annual town meeting.
I don't see Mr. Nelson present. Any questions, comments, or motion by the board?
I'll take a shot at it. I mean, the bottom line is, I believe you need at least ten signatures to, correct me, Mike, to at least, to appear, and I believe Mr. Nelson went out and got ten signatures, no more. He got ten, but they're not.
Exactly, ten.
Hey, when I run for election, you only need fifty. I'm not going to just go out and get fifty, I'm going to get a lot more than fifty, and he should have gotten more than ten signatures, simply put. And I understand it's just one signature shy, but the law is the law of the law, and I got to support the town clerk. She's the boss on that, and she gave due diligence in it, and I support the position of the town clerk relative to this article. It's sad, I don't think I could support the article going forward if it's not going to meet the criteria of the town.
I would just say that I agree, I'm not sure it's the right precedent for the town to set to include articles, you know, in the warrant that a petitioner just come up short on the, on the requirement. So I'm not sure that's a practice that we should generally engage in. And just parenthetically, in terms of the request itself, I've talked, talked it over with the town manager. There is a process that the town has actually started to implement, which would, has been doing so for, had the impression several months--
Right.
--upwards of even a year, where the work that Mr. Nelson is actually requesting, the town has been in the process of doing for some time. So it's, you know, it's, even if, even if I didn't have an objection to setting the precedent, I'm not sure it would be, well, I'm certain it would be make-work for town meeting. It's already being done. Any other comments? Since we have it as a board to consider, why don't we go ahead and take a motion on the request, just as a courtesy to Mr. Nelson, and then later we'll be able to take up the closing of the warrant?
I'd make a motion that we deny the request by Mr. Nelson, given the fact that the town clerk supported data to the board in not meeting the criteria of the general laws of Massachusetts at the annual town meeting.
I'll second. Name and second, and anything further? All in favor?
That brings us to a board to consider the request of Christopher Neville, that it was sent on behalf of Wilmington High School, class of nineteen seventy, to conduct a five-k geezers fundraiser walk to be held Saturday, May eighth, two thousand and ten. Mr. Neville is the one who came up with that title. I'm not calling folks younger than I am geezers at this stage. Mr. Nelson writes that that is part of the reunion weekend. Certain of the members have suggested conducting this particular race, and they propose that it parallel the same five-k route that's mapped out as a part of the annual Wilmington Half Marathon, and they, for the board's approval, to conduct the race, obviously pending the input and the conditions imposed by the police department.
Questions, comments, or a motion? I will move that we approve the request of Chris Neville to run a geezers fun run slash walk on Saturday, May eighth, two thousand and ten.
Second. Name and second, and subject to public safety conditions. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider the request of Susan Hendy and Carolyn Prem of the PMC Wilmington Kids Ride. They are the coordinators for that ride to close Carter Lane on Sunday, June sixth, two thousand and ten, to conduct the fifth annual Wilmington Pan Mass Challenge Kids Bike Ride. The town has cooperated with this group in the, in the past. The school department has no objection. Police department would work with this group if you wanted to, want to again, once again give them permission. It is a fundraiser, an athletic fundraiser, one of the largest in the nation, is the Pan Mass Challenge itself, which raises millions of dollars for Dana Faber Cancer Institute and the Jimmy Fund. In addition to that, now, this is an offshoot, the Kids Bike Ride. Their first ride was in September of two thousand and six, and the rides in two thousand and six and since then have raised over fifty-five thousand dollars. Wilmington is among about twenty-six communities, I believe, who sponsor such rides. It would require your approval to close Carter Lane for that period of time.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I make the motion that we grant the permission to close Carter Lane as long as the public safety is involved in the, all their guidelines.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Name and second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
And the board is being asked to consider closing and signing the warrant for the annual town meeting. If the board is so inclined, we have copies to be signed, which have been prepared in their final form based upon what was just reviewed before the board.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I make the motion that we close the, the signing of the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Second.
Name and second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
The board is asked to sign in, on three different documents just above their name, please. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Public comments? Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none? Important, I'm sorry, new business committee reports? Anything down here?
I'll speak very briefly to the fact that last Thursday, what was the date was for last Thursday? I guess I should report it. It was March fourth, thank you. There was a meeting of the I ninety-three Tri-Town Task Force in Andover, and the presentation was made by the consultant, V H B, at the time, and I'm pleased to report that the committee, that I should say, the task force voted unanimously to, obviously, we have to vote unanimously, but we voted to really push the contractor or the consultant forward, not the contractor, but the consultant forward, with coming up with the first pass at putting some specific definition and some hypothetical character. I can't think of the word I'm looking for. But giving, giving a look and a feel and a complexion to various types and sections within the affected area. So rather than talking about this hypothetically and looking at hypothetical examples of typical construction, we're going to look at assigning some specific construction techniques and modellings. construction, we're going to look at assigning some specific construction techniques and modalities within those regions. So I'm excited about the next step in the process now. We actually have them working on something, so look for that. The next task force meeting is scheduled for May 13th here in Wilmington, and I believe at that time, we should have our first glance at the first pass, and it's a living, breathing thing. It's not the end-all, be-all, but at least we're making some forward progress, and I'm excited about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, last meeting, the warrant article that Sleckman-Laporte brought up, reviewing my notes, excuse me, watching the meeting again on WCTV, it's something that might be brought up again in the fall. I was thinking, we as a board, maybe we can direct the town manager to maybe look into the cost of what something like that article would be and maybe bring it to us beforehand, or if it is brought up again, we'll have a better idea of what it would cost. I believe it will cost much higher than the numbers we were discussing at the last meeting.
Well, to the extent that we can, I mentioned that to the manager already, and I think he believes that you can give us some reliable numbers in terms of what to expect if that comes back. Got that right?
Yes, based upon the document that was presented by Sleckman-Laporte.
Right. Also, back to that document, and it looks like, Ray, you might have had some help putting that together. I think something of that size should be run by our town council too, to look at that, make sure it's a legal proposition. We're looking at the state to maybe grant Wilmington with a little favorable tax rate for reimbursement, or whatever, for the town, as opposed to other towns in the state.
Okay. Well, if that comes back, we'll certainly take that step. I have nothing by way of new business, important dates?
Yes. Remind folks that they've been invited to the Wilmington Company of Minutemen Installation of Offices, which will be held on March 14th at Minutemen Headquarters at 2:00 PM. Also, again, we've mentioned it a few times, March 16th is an important meeting where the Finance Committee and Planning Board will hold a public hearing relative to the warrant for the annual town meeting. They will review the warrant articles. Petitioners and others who would like to attend can begin to learn more about the articles and question any of the department heads or committees that are there, as well as the petitioners about reasons why they believe their article should be adopted. That is going to be held at the Town Hall Auditorium on Tuesday, the 16th, at 7:00 PM. Just a little advance notice to those parents that are interested that the registration deadline for T-ball, pretty popular here in Wilmington, you don't want your youngster to be shut out, is March 25th. You can either access the Recreation Department's website online for more information, consult the flyer that they distribute, or call the rec. office. April 2nd is the last day to register to vote for the annual town election and town meeting, and this obviously is for those who are not already registered. The town clerk's office will be open from 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM on April 2nd for that purpose. On Saturday, April 3rd, we will have the rabies clinic at the Public Buildings Department on Church Street from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM, dogs on a leash, cats in a carrier. I believe it's $10 for the vaccine. And on April, is it $10? It's $10. And on April 3rd, the annual Easter egg hunt will also take place far away from the pets' gathering for the rabies clinic, I can assure you. That'll be at the Town Common at 2:00, weather permitting, and also based upon whether the grounds are in the appropriate shape at that time on the Town Common. If they're not, all the festivities will move to the high school gymnasium, or the high school cafeteria, excuse me.
Good. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?